Go ahead and call the Monday, October 25th, 2025, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to Order. I'd like to welcome everyone here on this great closing out the summer, beginning of Traditional School Day. So, welcome everybody here. Want to also, we've got a couple August birthdays that we didn't announce earlier, but wanted, now that we're close to those August birthdays, we have Commissioner Council, or as we like to call her, our OG up here, but it's her birthday in August, as well as Assistant County Manager Faith Phillips as well has a birthday in August. So, happy birthday to you both. And, Madam Clerk, do we have Commissioner Council online?
She is not signed in.
Okay. If you will just let me know when she logs in online, and we can recognize her and make sure she's accounted for. At this time, we'll go ahead and have the invocation and pledge by Commissioner Glenn Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We can bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come today just saying thank you. Thank you for allowing us to see another day. Father, we ask you to bless the kids as they go back to school, along with the teachers and all the staff. Father, give them peace as they're in school. Let them be able to be successful in this school year. Father, we ask you to touch this meeting to make sure it's done decent and in order. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. And at this time, I'll go ahead and recognize Vice Sherwin Jones for her point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that, as we all know, we are from a military town, and this weekend, we had a wonderful celebration in honor of the Purple Heart Dinner's celebration. For those that you may, they may not be familiar, the Purple Heart recipients, that is to celebrate Gold Star Mothers and Families of Service Members Keel During Action, and all our fallen soldiers. And I am pleased to announce that, you know, an event like that, those are our main heroes, takes a lot to put that together. And our very own Deputy Clerk, Ms. Andrea Chappie, she did a wonderful job as the coordinator, and I just wanted to personally congratulate her. She has now been appointed. She will start as the North Carolina Public Heart Association, that's a major big deal, the state chair. We thank you for your service, and I know that when you start to be the chair effective in 2026, that you're going to do great things. And also, I have to say too, we all know how memorable the National Anthem is, as well as the Amazing Grace. And we have another superstar. I tell you, it touched everyone that was there. You had to be there. But Ava Clark, our other deputy clerk, she made sure to do it very well justice. And just again, we want to say thank you to all of our Purple Heart recipients that live here in Cumberland County, and to both of these young ladies, continue to use your gifts, not only to make the county proud, but the state of North Carolina. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll go ahead and move to recognitions. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Chairman W. Yeah, we have two recognitions that we need to move to a later meeting. The first one being the recognition, recognition of Jean Doyle Wellness Coordinator. Then the second one, recognition of the retired Innovation and Technology Services Director, Keith Todd. We need to move those to a later date in September.
Okay.
So, the first recognition we will have tonight will be the recognition of the Planning and Inspections Department for the Marvin Carlin, Marvin Collins Honorable Mention Award. And I turn this over to Ross Howard, Planning and Inspections Director.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up some of the planning staff that had worked on this project.
Please.
It's my pleasure to be with you today, or this evening. One of the goals that the planning staff has put in place since I came on board about five years ago was to do a comprehensive and systematic overhaul of all of our land use plans. Our staff has been working very diligently on that over the past couple of years. This past 2024, the Board of Commissioners passed the North Central Area Land Use Plan, which encompassed about 38,000 acres, was over top of about 17,000 citizens, and included the town of Linden. So, I thought that we did such a good job, we meaning the staff, and I'll introduce these folks here in just a second, that we submitted that for a 2025 Marvin Collins Planning Award with the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association. That's one of the highest awards you can get. There were about 50 submittals from, of projects and plans from Murphy to Manio, of all sizes and shapes and jurisdictions. And so, we got an honorable mention. So, about 10 out of the 50 got an award of some various kind. We got the honorable mention for the Small Area Plan category. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Trey Smith, who's the Comprehensive Planning and Manager, Sarah Grace Mitchell, a planner on our staff, Christopher Lawhorn, and Joel Schultz. The thing that really stood out about this is that this plan was accomplished in-house. A lot of times, when you do these plans, you know, they hire consultants and spend a lot of money on these types of things. But I was really proud over the effort that we got this type of award, working with staff completely in-house. So, we are going to be picking up that award and getting the official recognition in October. We're all traveling to Charlotte in October, as I said, for the North Carolina Chapter Annual Conference, and we'll be receiving that award at that time. I just wanted to take the opportunity to be able to recognize this staff for the hard work they did in front of all of you and in front of this public on television tonight.
And Commissioner Patel asks you to go down the podium and bring any comments, and we can get a picture real quick.
You guys want to say anything? They're shy. They're shy.
They just do all the work, and you get to speak. That's why it is wrong.
I just hope they're not this shy in Charlotte when they have to stand up there.
Yes, Commissioner Patel to come down as well.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Just taking a picture. Let you congratulate him if you can.
Stand here or up here?
Nope, you're good.
Just turn around.
How would you like it? Sarah Grace, you're probably the shortest.
Thank you so much. I think you have the next one, too.
I do. So, this one is a recognition of a retirement, one that holds a special place in our department, our Chief Building Official, Mr. Michael Naylor, who is, has been with us for a little bit over 22 years, has announced his retirement. Just have a little short bio here with your permission. I'd like to just read a couple of comments about Mr. Naylor. You guys can go ahead and come up here. Where are my inspectors? Mike right now, Mike, come on up here. So, if I say anything wrong, just let me know, okay? So, Mike started in government in 1992 as a firefighter with the Cumberland Road Firefighting Department. Spent two years with the department, and then taking a position later with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office in 1994. In 1995, he accepted a position with the Hope Mills Police Department until he transferred over to the AL, until he transferred over to the ALE in 1997, until his departure there in 2004. So, he comes from a very strong law enforcement background. In 2004, he accepted a position with the county's Fire Marshal Office and transferred over to be a multi-trade inspector with the department in 2005. In 2017, he was promoted to the Chief Building Official within the department, and has been in that position ever since. I just wanted to recognize Mike with this plaque for his years of service, for his 22-plus years of service to the department. Mike has been, when I first came here as a director in five years, Mike had been a stalwart of, one, his technical knowledge, but also, he was one of the employees that had been here for so long that I would really lean on him for the institutional knowledge that he provided as well, too, to be able to try to navigate me through some cultural situations with the folks that we deal with. So, you know, look for better or worse. But Mike's been a great part of the department, and I just wanted just to wish him a very happy retirement. And I just wanted to give you this as well, and wish you the best of luck.
And before you get that picture, I'm going to ask Commissioner Tyson to come down and bring any words.
Mike, thank you for all your hard work and everything that you've done. Appreciate it. I know it's a heavy duty all the time. You just, a lot, a lot of flags. But thank you for what you've done.
And while Commissioner Tyson's come back up, I'll recognize Commissioner Adams for a comment I knew he has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Mike and I have been around for a long time. We went through ALE, went through the fire department, and now, thank you for all you did. One of the things is that whenever we had conversations, they were productive, and you were always on time to do your job and do that for this county. You really cared about the citizens. It showed through the fire department, through the ALE, and now over here. So, thank you, and Godspeed to you, my friend.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And you're up again.
Yes. So, it's my pleasure also to be able to recognize the remainder of the inspectors who are sitting there very quietly, quietly and meek in the back. You guys can come forward, the four. As all of you know, during the particularly bad aftermath of Hurricane Helene that ravaged western North Carolina, there was a call-out, too, from the North Carolina Building Inspector Association for inspectors all over the state to come out to try to be able to provide assistance for the horrific aftermath of the damage that was caused for all of that. And so, Mike actually, who you just saw, came to my office and said, "Look, you know, the association is calling out for folks to send folks out west to go help." And without even blinking an eye, we had, these four people said, "We want to go." And so, we coordinated it out. We sent them out west. They saw some pretty horrific stuff while you're out there. And you can probably imagine with the amount of damage that was there, the having to sleep in very precarious types of situations, lack of water, just the facilities that they had to be able to both live in and be able to inspect was very, very difficult. But at the last, this last conference of the North Carolina Building Inspectors Association, these four in particular were recognized by the Association for the Barry Gupton Award, which is the award they give for the highest honor of civil service in their entire association throughout the entire state. It's a, it's a very prestigious award. It's certainly very good, like, recognition that shows a team-player attitude for our staff going out and helping others in a time of need. I will introduce them. This is Kim Canizaro, Gilbert Sanchez, Chase Lloyd, and Terry Streets. And I have certificates for them that I was going to give. Here's one for Gilbert. This is from the Building Inspectors Association for the official award. Can you give those to them?
And I'm going to, while you're doing that, ask Commissioner Tyson to join you back out of the podium.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for talking.
Yes.
Well, there's one more, but it's a group.
Yeah, it's a group. And what I'll do is, when I call out the individual programs, I'll call out the director and his staff. Please stand up. And then at the end, we'll get a picture down here.
And I'm going to ask Commissioner Faircloth to join them when they go down. As a NACO guy, bring comments.
And in July of 20, July of this summer, we were recognized Cumberland County with 17 NACO Achievement Awards at the national conference. These recognitions reflect the county's continued commitment to excellent service and delivery innovation, responsiveness, and community needs. And the awards were for leveraging the social media engagement by Public Information, Diane Rice, the Cumberland County Baby Store, Dr. Jennifer Green and her staff, the Connected Care Program, both Dr. Green, Public Health Director and DSS Director Brenda Jackson, the Healthy Conversations Program, Dr. Green, Public Health, C-Fort and Partner Portal, again, Dr. Green and Public Health, Cumberland One, Daniel Rister and Keith Todd for ITS, Information Technology Services, the Employee Child Care Center, somebody by the name of Clarence Greer and Faith Phillips, the Knight Internship Program, Ty Vault and Dominique Hall, and then Miller's Brew at Cafe West, Faith Phillips and Heather Hall, Soldiers to Agriculture, Lisa Childress Cooperative Extension Director, Wick at Fort Bragg, Public Health Again, Dr. Jennifer Green, and the Community Navigator, Library Faith Phillips and Heather Hall. And what I like to say is, Commissioners, I went to NACO two summers, and we were doing all these innovative things, and we never, I felt like we did things that were groundbreaking, moving the needle for the, for the community, providing services. And so, we pressed everyone to submit their things, and we got 17 awards. The downside is, we went to the conference, and we didn't get a chance to walk across the stage. But I also like to say, just recently, this past Friday, Thursday, Public Health and DSS were recognized at the last week, North Carolina Association County Commissioners' Annual Conference for Civic Innovation Awards for the Public Health, Healthy Conversations Program, and the DSS Social Work Simulation Training Program. So, we do great things here at Cumberland County, and I just wanted to make sure that you all, the Commissioners knew, the public knew, that we have a great staff, and they do great work, and they come up with innovative ideas to deploy services throughout the community.
All right, y'all go ahead and come on down.
We'll have something. We'll have somebody up here with the camera. Here he is. Okay. Yeah, I can't, I can't, it looks like some of the same people were at the meeting last Thursday, and we had, we had 25% of the awards that were won at the state level also. So, you know, Cumberland County's on the move. We've got good people in place doing good things, and it's for the good of our citizens. And as soon as he takes that picture, say that again.
Commissioners, y'all want to stand up a little bit?
Okay.
See if you can get us in.
I thought they were going to come back here. I thought y'all were going to come back here, so we can be in the picture. Come on back where the Commissioners are. Thank you so much. We're part of the team, too. There we go. Come on in, Mr. Commissioner Tyson. Let's squeeze in here. There we go. Yeah, let's come on in, Coastal Commissioners.
Okay, this is best I've ever looked on.
Now you got the whole team.
Commissioners, while they're going back to their seats, are there anybody else that would like to make comments on this rec, on this recognition of the staff? All right. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to all the Cumberland County staff that's here. They say that the organization's best asset is its people, and y'all show up every day for Cumberland County and work hard. And so, it's rightly deserved that y'all get this recognition and more. So, thank y'all for what y'all do.
Commissioner, Vice Sherwin Jones, you recognize?
I just wanted to definitely commend everyone, and I know sometimes we don't hear about our social workers and our teachers, and they're doing great things. So, I'm just pleased that all of you were able to come back and, you know, people get to see what you do. It's a privilege to serve on the Social Service Board and also the Public Health Board. Many times, people behind the scenes don't get due diligence credit. It takes a lot to work with challenging situations, all of those that, like I said, in public health in itself, and social service in the other areas as well. And definitely, we need our IT departments. So, it's just a pleasure to be a part of this team and, and to know that you all are doing great work. So, hats off to Cumberland County.
Thank you, Vice Sherwin. Commissioner Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think just to, off the manager, you know, we, Marshall and I have been going to NACO for years, and each year, we would watch people get awards of things that we did. Brenda was there, Brenda Jackson from DSS. We'd watch programs, we were getting awards of things we had been doing four and five years already. We just didn't put it out. And so, I want the citizens of this county to know what an awesome group of public servants that they have, who every day go out here to make sure that they take care of the citizens of this county. This board sets policy, but it's these individuals that you saw that came up that carry out that policy and do that. And they are hard-working people each and every day. So, if you see a Cumberland County employee, just thank them, because every day, they do this. They come in in the rain, in the, in the sleet, the snow, just to make sure that this county is taken care of. So, hats off to each and every one of you all. Thank you so much. We did this about a year ago. A lot of these programs are in the second year, and we just, they're just awesome, and thank you all so very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Faircloth, you recognize?
Chair, just say one thing. At the state meeting over the weekend, and part of last week, just, just to reiterate what a great group of people that we've somehow been able to attract to Cumberland County to do the jobs that they do. I ran into no less than three people who were retired from Cumberland County that the state, the state association had recruited to work for them. And they're going out to counties that can't afford a large staff, and they're doing things all over the state for some of the smaller counties, and helping them, and, and taking the things that they have learned here and taught us here to those smaller counties. So, even, even when they leave Cumberland County, they're still doing great things in the state of North Carolina, and we salute them.
Thank you, Commissioner Faircloth. Anyone else?
Again, I just want to say to not only the staff that was recognized tonight, but to all our staff, thank you for showing up every day. You truly are on the front line of what this county does and what county government does for our employee, for our community. So, thank you for showing up each and every day. At this time, we will go ahead and move to the public comment period. County Manager Greer, if you will read the public comment policy.
Yes, the policy for the public comment period is follows. The public comment periods should last no longer than 15 minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute is attained. No time may be yielded by a speaker to another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their names appear upon the sign-up sheet. Speakers will be, will address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating a name and address. Public comment period is not intended to require the board to answer any improper questions. Speakers will not discuss the matters regarding the candidacy or any person seeking public office. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated, and written comments and/or supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the board.
Madam Clerk, if you'll go ahead and call the first speaker.
Radhika Munigati. I'm sorry if I butchered your last name. I apologize.
Do I start now?
It's not turning on. Give us one minute. We're going to get our clock operational here.
The clock.
It's the clock.
Well, you don't have to time me. I'll just finish.
I'm blaming on Mr. Howard when he came up there.
Blame it on Mr. Howard when he came up there.
There we go. I timed it, it's three minutes.
My name is Radhika Munagati. I've been a resident of Fayetteville for the past 20-plus years and YMCA member for 10-plus years. And thank you for giving me this time today to speak about YMCA. Over 2,700 of our constituents rely on the YMCA of the Sandhills, which is one of the largest senior adult and childcare providers in the city. However, nearly 50% of its membership revenue is spent on emergency repairs to a failing 55-year-old building. We are requesting increased funding for a new facility that can better serve your community. How does the YMCA affect your constituents? The YMCA is not just for group fitness, it is a vital asset to the city. For example, they help keep 500-plus senior adults active in the community, provide after school care for kids, host regular food drives, host summer camps for 150-plus kids, and partner with local churches and the Boys and Girls Club. They provide free summer memberships to teens, connect them to licensed mental health counselors, offer life skills training like financial literacy and job preparation, and deliver safe, affordable after-school and summer programs for working families. Why should the county invest? Because investment yields results. In Cumberland County, a YMCA school partnership with the Alternative High School has helped to dramatically increase school attendance and participation among the students. Here in Fayetteville, teen mental health and after-school care programs are already changing lives. But the building cannot hold the demand. It literally cannot hold the heat or the water and at times, not even the roof. Why request a new building? The Fort Bragg Road Facility built in 1970 is deteriorating. Roof leaks, outdated H-WAC and recurring plumbing failures are disrupting services and compromising safety. Some classrooms are unusually hot or cold. Aged infrastructure like cracked bricks, leaking ceilings in locker rooms and unreliable heating threaten basic operations. A new building isn't a luxury, it is a necessity. Why can't the YMCA increase funding on their own? Last year alone, the YMCA lost over $400,000 in operating costs. 50% of the annual partnership fee, which is $34 for families, currently going, goes towards repairs instead of services. That is unsustainable. Most people think of the YMCA as a membership organization, but in reality, nearly 50% of our members have subsidized memberships because we serve where the need is greatest. Where can funding come from? As you're aware, there are public resources that are being left on the table. For example, the state of North Carolina allocated $18.5 million for summer feeding programs last year, but only $500,000 of that was used in Cumberland County. If it had the facility to do so, the YMCA could get approved as a sponsor site and could help access those unused funds to serve more children. Commissioners, the YMCA is not just a building, it is a support system for seniors, a second home for working families, and a lifeline for vulnerable teens, but the building is falling apart. Will you champion county support to fund the new YMCA facility for your constituents? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Justin Chase. I'm a resident of Fayetteville. I'm speaking on behalf of the YMCA of the Sandhills also. I'm a 20-year veteran of the United States Army and a 15-year veteran of the Fayetteville Fire Department. I was raised to accentuate the positive, eliminate the negative. Some of the positives, programs that children, that support children, special needs, and seniors. The YMCA is the largest provider of senior services and childcare in our area. Another positive is the entire staff. Negatives, the building is failing and as a result, the community suffers. Our YMCA is currently located in a 55-year-old building that is leased from Fayetteville Tech. Again, the building is failing us. This is a request for a safe place that all of us can meet our, have our needs met. The positive, the YMCA. The negative, the building. Thank you and we invite you to tour the Y and experience the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you call the next speaker.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Dr. Dion Phalace and I'm a retired general surgeon who's lived in Fayetteville since 87 and I joined the Y a year and a half ago in my mid-70s. What I'd like to help bolster my colleagues is that the YMCA is so important to their community health perspective. American healthcare has traditionally been reactive, meaning that it's been focused on the treatment of existing diseases, but it should be proactive. That means being focused on health with long-term maintenance of well-being. Proactive is being active. It's about quality of life and mind, body, and spirit. Includes physical activity, diet, and social interaction. Moderate activity is key. It doesn't require traditional tough guy gyms. Sitting is the new smoking, they tell us, which means that our exceedingly sedentary lifestyles have led to 40% of Americans being obese and 40% of all cancers in the United States are associated with obesity. These numbers have tripled in my professional lifetime and it's become an epidemic. The YMCA is the largest nonprofit community service in the United States. It's committed to creating personal and social change by inspiring action. The Y is dedicated to nurturing the potential of three at-risk groups, specifically children, teens, and older adults. This is done by improving health and well-being by a variety of activities and opportunities. Each local YMCA is operated autotomically with services that are tailored to meet community needs. The Fayetteville YMCA is currently in an older building that's rented from FTCC and like an old house in Haymon, it's always requiring repairs. A new YMCA would be a catalyst to allowing the Y to expand its capacity and capabilities to provide community services that are so important to our community health. Working together is a sure thing, not a speculative startup. The YMCA has been in Fayetteville since 1922, just more than 100 years. We're not requesting a monetary handout, but a collaborative handup so that Cumberland County citizens can enjoy a healthier lifespan and a longer health span. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next speaker. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next speaker.
Courtney Swart. Courtney Swart, 2760 Creek Meadows Place. I'm a now former Cumberland County Animal Services Officer. I worked at this department from 10:10, 22 to 8:22, 25, as well as two other animal services agencies prior. We find ourselves at a point where we wake up, put on our boots, and go out to face whatever new horror awaits us or face the same ones over again. Our system is inefficient. I can issue cruelty notices when ordinances are violated indicating there may be citations or criminal charges for failure to fix the issues, but we don't have the manpower or ability to pursue every neglect charge criminally. The legal system only seems interested in felonies, so I write a citation instead. Since 12/16/24, I have written over $15.4,000 in unpaid citations, which make no difference because they don't actually have to be paid. We don't garnish taxes or seek payment in court or do anything else to make those citations worth the paper they're written on. We require the power to enforce consequences. Our bark has no bite behind it and the public has long since figured it out. We are constantly pressured to respond to calls faster, prioritize calls because someone has complained their way up a chain that does not understand what we do. This strips us of our judgment and ability to make the decisions about which calls we attend to first. At least twice in recent memory, animals have died as a result. It is not the people making these decisions that are the ones kept up at night by their outcomes. I understand it is your responsibility to hear the concerns of your constituents, but I implore you to understand that we are the experts in our field. There should never be a time when complaining to the right people or when who you know results in special treatment. I'm aware the public has a generally unfavorable opinion of animal services and frequently states we don't respond to calls or take a long period of time to do so. They're right. And I will happily address every leash law call as soon as I'm done wrestling aggressive dogs onto the truck trying desperately to save the hypothermic dog thrown outside by its owners, cradling sick kittens in my shirt and hoping they survive the drive to the shelter, climbing over human corpses to pick up their beloved companions, euthanizing animals, photographing walking skeletons for cruelty cases, negotiating dogs away from an animal hoarder, and 1,000 other crises. I implore you to understand we need changes to the animal ordinances, more support from county management and other agencies, and understanding that we are understaffed, overworked, underappreciated, and underpaid department-wide. This is not how you recruit and retain highly skilled professionals. Every day, dozens of comments revert to the officers of this county in unfavorable ways. I remain silent as per county policy. I've not responded by telling them that there were days where I was the only officer attempting to service the entire county alone. That we would tell them this, we've been told we are not allowed to talk to the public or speak to our elected officials. That we are doing the best that we can with the lack of support. That they should ring their county commissioners and vote for someone else if they don't listen. The animal services has essentially been told to sit down, shut up, and take it on the chin. That we've been trying to address our concerns with county management for months. Let me be clear, I followed policy, but as of 8:22, 25, I'm no longer bound by it. This includes not speaking to the media. As someone whose career revolves around being a voice for the voiceless, I will not be silent. I remember everything and I investigate for a living. I'll be happy to share with you in a more private forum, but if it needs to be more public, I'll do that as well. I recommend you come to animal services and speak with the leadership of each section of the department, right along with the officers and spend a day with shelter and medical staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
One more.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Bernard Hayes, a resident of Fayetteville, Cumberland County for a long time. I come to make an appeal to each and every one of you on behalf of the YMCA of Cumberland County. It is important that I share with you three basic points that I believe are salient as we talk about this need in our community. First, we have a longstanding community and the YMCA has an impact and a legacy. For over 50 years, the YMCA has been a cornerstone of our community, a place where generations have come together for fitness, youth development, and fellowship. Countless residents from children in swimming lessons to seniors in wellness programs have built healthy habits and lifelong friendships within its walls. Rebuilding the facility isn't only about replacing a building, it's about preserving a legacy that has shaped our town's identity. The second point that I want to share with you is that broad, we have broad and diverse community use. The YMCA has served as a gathering place for people of all ages, backgrounds, and income levels. Beyond exercise, it has hosted after-school programs, summer camps, rehabilitation classes, community meetings, and even emergency shelter services. This breadth of youth means a new facility would directly benefit every demographic in our city, from youth needing a safe place after school to older adults looking to maintain health and interdependence. Many of these activities cannot be done with our current facilities. And finally, I want to share this last point, economic and social return on the investment. A new YMCA will be an investment that pays dividends for decades. Modern facilities attract new members, regional events and partnerships that stimulate local business. It will also reduce long-term maintenance costs compared to pouring money into patchwork repairs of an aging structure. More importantly, it will continue to serve as a hub that promotes public health, reduces crime by engaging youth, and fosters social connection, all of which save the city money in the long run. The various systems in this community need the YMCA as one of the pillars which is firmly embedded in this community. We enjoy a great community. If we remove any portion, the pillars will then fall. I beg you, consider replacing the YMCA for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
We'll go ahead and close the public comment period at this time and we'll go ahead and move to item one, approval of the agenda. County Manager Greer, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Devier, we would like to add for item AC, proclamation for Black Breastfeeding Week, we would like to remove rezoning case 4A, case ZON25-0017. Then we would also like to remove from the agenda from item of business, item 5B, approval of the proclamation recognizing Fire Chief Owen Harris. And then we will not need a closed session tonight.
Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was informed late this afternoon of the untimely passing of Chief Linwood Hill of Wade Fire Department. And I would ask for the board's consideration that we look to add as a item on this agenda to direct the clerk to prepare a board proclamation in advance of his services, which will be held on August 28th, and that we approve the chairman to sign that board proclamation as it is drafted.
There's been a motion, a second, but without objection, we'll add that to approval of the agenda once that motion's made.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing no objection, I'll go ahead. Any other items for the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Sheriff Jones?
I entertain a motion that we will approve this agenda with the amended changes as requested at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the additional item added. There's been, it's been properly seconded. I'd ask for your vote at this time. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we'll go ahead and move to item two, presentation, two A, presentation of the year 2026 adopted budget.
Yes, every, at the end of every year, Chairman Devier and fellow commissioners, we have our annual budget, fiscal year budget video. Diane Rice, Communications Director slash PIO, has prepared this video for you all to review, along with Deborah Shaw and her staff with Budget and Performance. And so I'll turn it over to Diane to start to present the video.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The staff that put this video together is behind the scenes tonight, making sure that, that tonight happens, so just want to briefly applaud them. They're awesome and they've partnered with our budget team to put this video together for you. We tried to really highlight your key priorities, your funding allocations, and all of the hard work that you put into our budget this year. On June 19th, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners adopted the fiscal year 2026 budget, investing $406.2 million into our community with a property tax rate of 49.9 cents per $100 valuation. The budget is built to support our growing community while staying fiscally responsible and future-focused. Here are some highlights. The fiscal year 2026 budget delivers on the strategic priorities adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The $406.2 million budget ensures we maintain essential services, support our workforce, and manage inflation responsibly. Following the 2025 property revaluation, the board adopted a property tax rate of 49.9 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, 6.03 cents below the revenue neutral rate, and 30 cents lower following the 2025 revaluation. The county continues to demonstrate responsible fiscal management while maintaining essential services, helping taxpayers while maintaining core services. The Board of Commissioners made historic investments in education by funding $103 million for current expenses, fully meeting the Cumberland County schools' requests, and higher education investments of $16.25 million toward operating expenses, $1.5 million of capital for FTCC, and $3 million for the Cape Fear Valley Medical School. We've targeted funding to strengthen recruitment and retention of sheriff's deputies and detention officers. There will be continued investment in public health staffing to enhance service delivery. The board dedicated funding for legal aid to expand access to justice across the county. We will provide ongoing support for volunteer fire departments to improve emergency response capacity. We are making strategic investments in economic development. We are making strategic investments in economic development partnerships to attract new industries, including support for site-ready locations. The Board is providing historic funding to expand access to clean, safe, regulated drinking water throughout the county. We are continuing technology enhancements to streamline services and promote business growth and innovation. Strategic health and wellness investments this year include targeted support for regional organizations delivering health and community-based services, additional funding to support newborn health and early-life wellness, increased resources for veterans to better serve those who serve. These projects foster community pride and economic opportunity. We've enhanced transportation for seniors and disabled residents, and invested in quality development through nonprofit partnerships. Investment in local nonprofits helps address critical needs and strengthen community partnerships. Continued enhancements to transportation services for senior and disabled residents promotes greater accessibility and independence. From a property tax rate reduction, providing significant tax relief following the 2025 revaluation, to investment in the county's professional workforce, including a cost-of-living adjustment, we are ensuring the continued delivery of high-quality services to our citizens. Strategic, cultural, and recreational investments this year include support for the planning and scoping of a regional aquatic center, and the expansion of parks and recreation access, particularly in rural areas, promoting equitable access to leisure and wellness opportunities. To attract and retain top talent, the budget includes a 4% cost-of-living adjustment, a 401K increase, and increased starting pay for detention officers and sheriff's deputies. With these investments, we're boosting recruitment and retention for all county departments. At the heart of our service is pride, professionalism, respect, integrity, diversity, and excellence. These core values guide every department and every decision we make. This budget supports vital infrastructure, meets all mandates, and reflects strong fiscal stewardship that balances today's needs with tomorrow's goals. For full budget details, visit CumberlandCountyNC.gov/budget. Together, we're investing today to build a stronger, smarter, and more vibrant Cumberland County.
So Ms. Rice, where can people find that if they want to watch it themselves?
Great question, and if you want to turn the volume up, you're welcome to check this out. It's on our YouTube channel. It'll also be on the Budget Landing page, and you can see it throughout the week on CCNCTV Spectrum Channel 5.
So if they go to CumberlandCountyNC.gov, they can find it there, then go to our YouTube page and watch it there, and turn the volume up.
Yes, all the way up. Yep. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any comments before we move to the next item? All right, we'll go ahead and move to item three, consent agenda. Commissioners, any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I would ask to pull item G and I, Y and AB.
G, I, Y.
Y. AB.
And AB.
AB is my last one way back.
All right, we will go ahead. Commissioners, are there any other items? So again, we're moving, we're pulling, requested to pull G, I, Y, and AB. And we will move those to items of business, and they will be F on, and I'll add those on following our last item of business already approved. Anybody else? Hearing none, ask for a motion, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Vice Chairman Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the amended changes for that to be moved.
Second. Consent agenda, there's been a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item G, I, Y, and AB. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And the consent agenda is approved, and those items are moved to items of business. At this time, without objection, the body will now present the proclamation approved to Calvin Bishop's family and friends in attendance. As we have a longer meeting, I prefer not to have them wait, so without objection, I'm going to go ahead and move this item forward. Hearing no objection, so moved. Commissioner Tyson, I'd ask you to go to the podium and present the proclamation.
We are presenting a board proclamation tonight to Calvin Chief Bishop, former Battalion Chief of Fayetteville Fire Department. And just as a personal comment, you know, we've lost a lot of longtime public service folks here recently, and none of them hit as hard as Chief Bishop. You know, I was looking through, and after a 35-year career, it's been easy to say, hey, you've done, you've served your time, you've gone above and beyond for what you've done. But Chief Bishop continued to serve the community. And as Chairman of the LEPC, the Emergency Planning Commission, it's especially a great honor for me to be here to present this tonight. We do have an award ceremony that's going to take place next month, so the Board Chair and myself will be there, and any of the other Commissioners as well, and we're going to present you with a framed copy of this proclamation. But we wanted to give it to you tonight, just to tell you that we're here with you, we feel your loss, and we feel this community's loss for such a great public servant, and we appreciate everything that your husband has done to serve this community. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if the board would just indulge a little longer, would it be appropriate for you to recognize Mr. Gary Clumpfro? I believe he has a special presentation he would like to make on behalf of emergency services as well.
Mr. Clumpfro, if you'll go ahead and come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here. Chief Bishop was one of the very first interactions that I had as I came up in my emergency management career. He was a wealth of knowledge. There's probably not a lot of fire service questions, rescue questions, or hazmat questions that he could not answer. He was one of the, part of the very first paramedic class that was here in Cumberland County. He was a pillar in starting the regional response team at Fayetteville Fire Department, as well as their rescue, special operations. Did a lot of work in that realm. After his retirement from there, he took on the role as Training Coordinator at the Regional Fire Training Center that y'all funded, and he got that program up and running, and is hugely responsible for how successful it is today. Additionally, he served as the LEPC president for, I think, three or four terms, which is a huge deal. The LEPC is one of those overlooked kind of boards and commissions that has a really important job in the background, but he was instrumental in the success in running training and exercises to make sure that our first responders are prepared. So this certificate is from the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and we also have a challenge coin from you, for you from the emergency services. And also, Mr. Chairman, to show how important he was, we have a representative from North Carolina Emergency Management that is in charge of the regional response team, as well as his colleagues from the Fayetteville Fire Department that are here to support family.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Thank you again for allowing us to go ahead and do that earlier. I thought it was appropriate with family here and guests, as we have several other things to go through tonight. We'll go ahead and move to item four, public hearings. County Manager Greer, will you read the board rules and procedures for public hearings?
Yes, the public hearing procedures always follows. Arguments by the proponents and opponents should be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes per each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time period is attained. Rebuts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. Tonight, Chairman, we have six planning cases, planning zoning cases. Ross Howard, Director of Planning and Inspections, will present each item and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
All right. First case we have for you, stated by Mr. Greer, is case ZON-25-0018. As you can see, this is in the Graves Creek area of the county, highlighted by the red location star just east of Highway 87. The request is to go from A1 Agricultural to R40 and R40 to R40 residential. So this is a split-zone piece of property, so the applicant's just really just seeking to be able to put it into one category and then be able to subdivide it for, to put some, put two houses on the lot. The applicant and the owner is Mark Alden Rice and Aaron Kirtland Sanderson Rice, and the property that is in question is just off Butler Nursery Road off H. Clark Road. Let's see if I can get a pointer. Here we go. With the red hatched here that you can see, and you can even see the zoning boundary that's here in the middle, that's denoting the splitting of the property. So the area is largely surrounded by a mix of single-family and manufactured homes. There is a commercial lot that's across the street or catty corner to it, where the church is further down on the corner near Butler Nursery Road. This is just a zoning map. You can see that, here's the C3, which is a dormant district currently, but for the most part, this area that's all highlighted here is R40. So the request is, as stated before, is to take it into a common district in line with what's pretty much around it or adjacent to it. This is a highlight of it. You can see from the aerial, it's just a current single-family home on the property. This is in the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District. There's no water and sewer lines that are out here for the property, but the site itself does not, by any indication, have any hydro or hydro inclusion soil, so the soils are fairly good. This is just a topo map that we put with four-foot contours, you can see, so there's only, the site is fairly flat. When staff look at this, we look at the South Central Plan, which designates it as farmland. When you look at the goals that are provided for that particular designation, it's to provide a complete range of residential housing types, promoting quality housing and so forth, and then the associated districts are A, A1, A1A, R40, R40A, and CD. So staff felt that with the goals and policies and then the associated districts that it was compliant with our land use plan. This is the subject property. This is looking down H. Clark Road with the site immediately on the left-hand side. You can see the zoning sign, which is required by state statute for public notification requirements. This is the west view, which is essentially just looking right across the street. And this is the north view, with the site immediately on the right-hand side. So staff did recommend approval of this request when it went to the planning board in June. They supported it by a seven-to-zero vote. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioners, any questions before we go to the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clark, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll ask the Commissioners again if there's any questions or discussion on this zoning case. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Director Howard. At this time, I'd like to make a motion in case ZON-25-0018, move to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District and R40 Residential District to R40 Residential District. The Board finds the request is consistent with the South Central Area Land Use Plan, which calls for farmland at this location. The Board also finds the request is reasonable and in the public interest, as it's compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Second. We have a motion to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District and R40 Residential to R40 Residential. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman Devier, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Fairclough. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
Go ahead and move to the next case.
Yes, sir. Make sure I got the right one here. Next case, Commissioners, is case ZON-25-0019. This is located in the Jack Britt area of the county. You can see that it's highlighted by the star between Hope Mills and the city of Fayetteville. Looking a little bit further, this is just off Rockfish Road, near the soon-to-be heavily construction area of Camden and Rockfish. So, but you can see the site itself is highlighted in this red crosshatch. It's essentially these two properties. The area currently right now, if you've probably driven out there, is a pretty serious area of transition right now. You have a lot of residential that's kind of slowly kind of morphing into a commercial designations, but this is no different. You have largely some single-family properties, one duplex areas that are around that, but if you go further down and at that intersection, it's a, it gets into some pretty intense commercial development with Camden and Rockfish. When you look at the zoning map, the surrounding area is R10. There is RR that's just right across the street, and I should probably back up, I'm sorry, I failed to mention. The applicant and the owner is Marion and Kimberlin Starling. There's no agent, but they are, but the request is to go from R10 to RR. So essentially, it's just the R10, but you do have RR, as I stated before, that's in the immediate area. The intent is to put a commercial business for, like a landscaping and a nursery business out in this particular area for about 16.84 acres. Right. This is an aerial. You can see here, there are two ponds that are out on the area, but largely, it's just a wooded piece of land. There is water out in this area. There is sewer that's further down the road, so the connection to this and any kind of associated possible annexations with the town of Hope Mills, for example, would come at that particular point. We start getting into the details of what would be required for that business for water and sewer. But there is water out there that's currently there, but there's no, not really any hydro or hydro inclusion soils, so the soils are largely very favorable. Very busy with topo out on the site. As I said, you got some, two ponds that are here, but largely, the frontage area on the front here is largely flat and buildable, but it's our understanding that the applicant and the owner largely is going to start putting storage and stuff along the backer part of the area, and then the more commercial frontage is going to be up on the front of Rockfish. When staff looked at this against the plans, this does fall in the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for it to be low-density residential. So it does have a lot of policies and goals, I won't read them here, but you can see them up on the screen that largely more dictate towards residential development. So it's not compliant with the adopted land use plan. So if the Board does vote in favor of the request, it would be an automatic change to amend that plan, so there would be no other action that would be required by the Board to do that type of thing. So this is the subject property, largely cleared. This is the east view on Rockfish Road. You can see the site immediately on the left-hand side with the required public notification sign. The south view, looking immediately across the street. And then this is the west view with the site immediately on the right-hand side. Behind this, if you're familiar, as I said, with the area, you start getting more towards like the Hope Mills area and all that commercial development that is found in that particular area, for those of you that are familiar with the geography. So staff did recommend approval of the request, because it's going to RR, and RR, just keep in mind, does allow some forms of non-residential development. Staff was looking at it for the fact that you already had RR just across the street, so we're not envisioning a too heavily intense type of commercial development, but we didn't have really an issue with the request and felt like it was reasonable. When we took this to the planning board at their June meeting, they supported our take on it by seven-to-zero vote. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, questions on this case? Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you stated that the use, they want to build a child development center, is that correct?
No, sir, it'll be like a, I'm sorry. No, ma'am, it's going to be largely a plant nurturing, like a landscaping business.
Oh, a landscaping business.
That's what they have told us.
Okay, landscaping business. And one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
And then in regards to, you said the sewer that's And then in regards to, you said the sewer that's up the road, I guess they would, in regards to zoning, before all that would take place, would there be, I guess, some type of study to see if it would meet the criteria of these wet lines? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out in that particular area. Would there be an inspection done, I'm presuming?
Yes.
Before?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else, Vice Chairman?
That's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Howard, the, really, the change is the use-driven. If you look at the, well, it's actually R7 and 1/2, because the R10's dormant. The development requirement, should this not be a nursery in the future, or the development requirements for residential is very similar to that between the RR and the R7 and 1/2, correct?
Well, the only difference would be that the 7 and 1/2 would obviously be more dense as far as what type of residential uses you could put there. You're talking about 7,500 minimum square foot lots as compared to 20,000, which is the current zoning now.
Got you.
Right.
And as a follow-up, Mr. Chairman, so really, the big request here is just to get it into a district that they could use it for their intended use.
I would say that's a fair assessment, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Yeah, Mr. Howard. I see you've got RR across the street on Rockfish, but on this side is basically the R10 and the residential, and even though they say they would use it as a, for that purpose, they don't have to use it for that purpose at that particular point. And then you've got the traffic coming out. I mean, it's a nursery and landscaping, so the amount of traffic, did we look at the traffic on Rockfish Road when we were looking at, and we doing that? Quite a bit of traffic out on that particular section.
Yeah, this whole intersection down here, we actually have another zoning case that's going to be coming here shortly, just for that intersection, but this whole area is getting ready, pretty much, you know, for lack of a better term, to get blown out with transportation improvements. And so they're going to be widening, and they're going to be adding some stronger signalization for that particular area. So, you know, we looked at, as you had CP that was here, you had C2P that's here, you got some commercial in the area, and then, you know, the idea that RR, for example, is less intense than the 7.5, so we thought it would be a less intense use out there.
And I understand that, but even though you tell me the RR, the C2P, the C2, they may have been there before, because all of that's kind of below where all of that residential is, so some of that could have been rezoned prior to. I mean, I just, if that's my house and my family and all of that with the R10, you're talking about putting a commercial thing right around all of that residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Commissioner Adams?
No, sir. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
And you stated that it's 16.8, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, it's a fairly, yes, it's 16.84 acres. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any other questions before we move to the public hearing? All right, hearing none. We will go ahead and open the public hearing for this case. Madam Clark, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one more clarification, just so everybody understands.
Yes, sir.
If this is approved, the RR would be a more restrictive zoning, meaning it would have less density than the current R7 and 1/2.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in the event, I know that they had vowed for this to be a landscaping nursery. Would this particularly, would they have to, if they changed their mind prior to make it something else, are they going to have to inform you of this? Like, there's a change. In other words, they're stating that they want to make a landscaping nursery at this time. However, they changed their mind to put some other type of business on there, would that make a difference in regards to criteria of what they would have to go through, my question?
For the most part, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they would have to notify you of a change?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I guess I'm getting at, so that our listening audience and even myself would understand, based on what type of business it's in, it may or may not meet certain criteria, so they would have to give information if there was a change in wanting it to be something other than a landscaping business.
Yeah, so regardless, they're going to have to get a zoning permit and everything, so that, you know, no matter what they put there, they're going to have to come before us anyway.
Okay.
Yes.
And then they just let you know if they changed their mind about what it's going to be?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Just so we, they may tell you something different, but they don't have to get your approval. Once it's zoned, it's whatever's in that zoning, then they can do that. So they don't have to get your approval to do that. They just have to meet all, whatever the requirements are, but they don't have to come and say, "I'm going to change this." They will have to in terms of whatever, but it's whatever's in that zone that they can do.
But they would have to pull building permits, include the building permit process. They'd have to get a zoning permit and all that, so we would just scrutinize it at that time, depending on what they wanted to do.
But if it's within that zoning, you can't deny it.
No.
Right.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you. Director Howard, with the concerns that I'm hearing from the board, it seems that if the applicant were to potentially utilize the rezoning for a more robust commercial, more maybe traffic-oriented use, can you just explain what would be the, with going to RR, what's the, what's, because I understand it's fairly restrictive from a business use, so what would be the most busy business if that, that's the easy way to put it?
Well, it's, I would say that district was set up primarily, and we do have this in urban areas, but it is set up to do things like veterinarian offices, things that really serve a lot more of the rural areas, because we also have some non-residential stuff in A1, for example. So I would say more like office uses would probably be able to go there, but it's going to be very specific. It's not just generic, but as far as strip shopping centers or things like that, I don't think you would see anything like of that intensity that's there. It's really meant to be more of like, things like serving agricultural uses and things like that, or more like rural areas, those type of businesses. And they're very limited. I can probably count on two hands how many commercial uses you can go there, and they're really more meant for the farming community.
Commissioner Patel, anything else?
Nothing.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? If not, Commissioner Patel, entertain a motion.
Thank you. At this time for Case ZON-25-0019, I've moved to approve the rezoning request from R10 Residential District to RR Rural Residential District and find that, one, approval is an amendment to the adopted current Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, and the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map for this request. Two, development and density allowed by the requested district is compatible to existing lot sizes and character of the nearby area. Three, the requested zoning direct district is currently established and pervasive on parcels adjacent to the site and throughout the area. The board also finds the request is reasonable and in public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
We've got a motion to approve the rezoning request from R10 to RR. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none. I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Fairclough. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
And we'll go ahead and move to the next case.
Yes, sir. Case ZON-25-0021. This is also in the area that you see down off of Highway 87 in the, in the Graves Creek area of the county, highlighted by the red highlighted star. The applicant is Sean Dury Investments LLC. The agent is Mr. Jeff Riddle. The request is to go from A1 Agricultural to C2P Plan Service and Retail for the intent of putting a self-service laundry business. So just keep in mind, this is not conditional. This is just what the applicant has told us what the intent is. That's all that is. So it's just a little over an acre, but you can see it's just this corner lot that is out here off, close to the corner of, let me get my pointer over here, to the corner of Sand Hill Road. There we go. Sorry. There we go. Corner of Sand Hill Road for this little small parcel that is sandwiched in between existing C2P and C1P off of Highway 87. Pretty much this area, if you, again, if you're familiar, I travel down 87. This is a lot of shopping that you find out there. There's a mobile home park that's out there, but for the most part, you see a lot of convenience stores. There's a fire department that's out there, and then you have a church across the street, so it is sort of a mixed bag of different types of commercial uses and residential uses. Highlighting by color, you can kind of see the zoning map. Again, you have C1P, C2P, you have some commercial that is here along the frontage of the road, so staff largely saw this as a continuation of what you see out there. What you, and I'll try to point this out on the maps, but there is a private road, it's not DOT, it's privately owned, it's Pummel, that is right here, that is largely the entrance to this mobile home park, but it does sit on the corner of this private road and highway, it is 7 here. But you can see it's got A1 across the street, but for the most part, this is, as I said before, is largely just a hodgepodge of different type of shopping choices in the area. This is the highlight and the aerial. You can see right now it's currently wooded. There is water and sewer out in this area. It sits just across from the boundary of the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District, but for the most part, there's already utilities that are out here in this area, so it is, it is serviceable. When staff looked at this against the applicable plan, it is in the South Central Land Use Plan, which was adopted in 2015. It does call for heavy commercial. It does sit in the, as you can see by the purple designation there, it sits right on the outside edge of that, so that does promote quality commercial development and more intense commercial-type uses in these areas. So with that, and then you have the associated, the associated districts would be CP, which is our most intensive commercial development. So given the size and scale of this particular piece of property and given what's around, we just work with the applicant to tone that down, so C2P is more about services that serve the immediate area, not more of the region. So, but the applicant agreed to that, and so that's why we moved forward with that, with that district. This is the subject property. You can see this is the, right over here, you can see this is Pummel Road, which I was just saying before is a private street, but this is the corner lot in question right off 87. This is the north view with the site immediately on the left-hand side. Again, you can see the required public notification sign for state statute. This is the southeast, looking across the street, looking across 87, and this is looking south with the site immediately on the right-hand side. Staff does recommend approval of the request. Again, we thought it was compliant with the plan and so forth. When we took this to the planning board at their, I believe this was at the June meeting, they also supported that recommendation by seven-to-zero vote.
Commissioners, before we move to the public hearing, I would see if you have any questions or comments. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clark, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I'll entertain any additional questions or comments on this zone, on this case. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you. In case ZON-25-0021, I move to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to C2P Plan Service and Retail District. The board finds that the request is consistent with the South Central Land Use Plan, which calls for heavy commercial at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest as it's compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Second. We have a motion to approve the rezoning request from A1 to C2P. It's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none. I'll entertain your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we'll go ahead and move to the next case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So Case ZON-25-0024. This is located down Cedar Creek Road in the more south-central portion of the county, as you can see, highlighted by the red star. The applicant owner is Beulah May Johnson Ayers. There's no agent, but the request is to go from A1 Agricultural to R40A Residential. The intent is to put a second dwelling on the property. As you can see here, this is Cedar Creek Road. We'll get a little bit more specifics when we get into the aerial about what that large swath of land is behind it, but for the most part, you have Turnbull Road here, near the intersection of Cedar Creek and Turnbull, it's up here, but you can see the highlighted star of this, I mean, the highlighted site here in red crosshatch. This area is largely wooded and agricultural. I'd say it's more wooded, but for the most part, you do have some single-family out here, out in that particular area, largely stick-built, single-family homes. This is the zoning. It's all A1. You do have R40, which is located up here towards, more towards the intersection of Cedar Creek and Turnbull, as I just mentioned before. So just a highlight, there is an existing home on the property here up in the corner. Lot of wooded area. There are some hydro and hydro conclusion soils, and there's no water and sewer lines that are out here, but you can see it's, it's in a very rural area of south-central part of the county. The topo on the site's largely flat, so as far as building and the ability to be able to put a second dwelling on here is largely there. When we looked at this as staff, against our applicable plans, it does fall underneath the Southeast Cumberland Plan of 2016. It has a large designation called one acre with water and half acre with public water. Being that the request met a lot of the goals that really address a lot of the housing out there, to promote the concentration of new development in the northwestern section of the study area, to allow residential lots and so suitable enforcement of housing standards and so forth, but the requested districts of R40, R40A, A1, A1A, RR, and R20, staff felt that it was largely compliant with the plan, so we didn't have a problem being able to move it forward accordingly. And being the fact that it did not have water and they're going for about an acre, staff didn't have a problem with the request. This is the subject property in question, standing on the street, standing on Cedar Creek. This is the north view with the site immediately on the left-hand side with the required state statute, public notification sign in the yard. East view, looking across the street, and then this is looking south with the site immediately on the right-hand side. So if I need to show those pictures again, I'm sorry, I went through them kind of quick, but if you need to see them again, I'll be happy to go by. Staff does recommend approval of the request. When we took this to the board at their July meeting, they have supported our request by an eight-to-zero vote.
Commissioners, questions or comments on this zoning case before we move to the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clark, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, any additional comments or questions on this zoning case? Hearing none. Commissioner Patel, entertain a motion.
In case ZON-25-0024, I move to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to R40A Residential District. The board finds that the request is consistent with the South Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for one-acre lots without public water, half-acre lots with public water at this location. The board also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest as it's compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the rezoning from A1 to R40A. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comment on the motion? Hearing none. I will ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to the next zoning case.
Case ZON-25-0025. You can see this is in the area down, in the Hope Mills area, in the southwestern part of the county is highlighted by the star between basically the cities of Hope Mill and Fayetteville, Hope Mills and Fayetteville. The request is by Jasmine Scott and Tweedy Enterprise LLC. The request is to go from R6A and RR Rural Residential to R6A. So this is just cleaning up, similar to the case we had before, is just cleaning up a split zoning of the case in order to be able to put a small manufactured home park on the site. It's about 2 and 3/4 of an acre, but you can see this is Snow Hill Road. Get my pointer here. You'll see it in the color here in just a little bit, but this is the I-95 Business and Gillespie Street here, coming off of Snow Hill Road. Largely, R6A is already in the area, so staff, again, was looking at what was in the existing area and what could be put there anyway, and it backs up to manufacturing, one of our heaviest manufacturing districts that we have in our zoning. one of our heaviest manufacturing districts that we have in our zoning. So when you look at the areas that are around here, within the six-hundred-foot radius that we mail out for these particular types of cases, there are some commercials that is up on Snow Hill Road, as you can see here, but we do have some existing manufacturer homes that are in the area, so we didn't think that the intent of what the owner wished to do was largely out of character with what's already out there and zoned anyway. So again, this is more of a coloration, so you can get a better picture of what that looks like, so as I said before, you have R six A, which is, you know, I know it's two different shades of purple here, but this is all R six A with the residential on the front, including the half of the lot in question, you have RR in the back, and then you have this manufacturing piece that sits here, and then all of this is zoned for heavy commercial up in the front. Aerial of the site, largely wooded. There is water out here, sewer is available out in the major road here that you can see with the brown line here, there are no hydroic soils or hydroconclusion soils on the property. The topo's pretty good, pretty much flat, there's no hills or anything like that on the property. When staff looked at the plan for this area, this is also in the South Central Area Land Use Plan, they do call for medium-density residential, so we do have a number of goals here that provide a complete range of housing types and so forth, you know, including trying to encourage things like multifamily development, including manufactured homes on individual lots, so the idea of putting a manufactured home park here is not out of character with the adopted goals that the board has put in place. So staff, and then if you look at the associated districts that's in the plan, that would be associated, R five, R six, R six A, density development and mixed development are all acceptable districts, at least according to your adopted policy. So staff felt that it was consistent with the adopted plan. This is the subject property, see, as I said before, it's largely flat, I mean, it's graded for the driveway, but largely it's still grass back into the area, it's just standing on the road looking inward. This is southeast view on Snow Hill Road, looking away from the major road, with the site immediately on the left-hand side. This is the southwest view on Snow Hill Road, and then this is the northwest view, looking more towards the intersection with, as you can see, with the required public notification sign on the property. Staff recommends approval of the request, we took this to the July meeting, and they also, the planning board then, supported it by eight to zero.
Commissioners, questions or comments before we go to the public hearing? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Howard, while I got you here, I did notice that this property is located within the airport overlay district. I know, according to your report, the airport did not provide any comment or feedback, but can you just humor me for a second and just go over so the public understands what all wood, it's typically required in that overlay district, just so we know?
Yes, so we don't have a limitation per se of anything with residential. I know the airport generally kind of gets concerned about having houses in the airport zone, but it really depends on where in that zone it is, it's very expansive. So within that zone, you have zones within the zone, so this is not within a landing area, this is not within anything that would be like a runway approach, this is more or less like in the larger, broader outer perimeter of the airport overlay, which encovers a massive amount of area. So really what, more or less what they generally tend to look for is going to be height, height and glare, I should say. So for example, if you had solar farms or something like that, things that would reflect onto airplanes or pilots as they're flying, or if we decide like us, like for example, MP allows, that's our most intense industrial district, so if you had like tall smoke stacks, towers, things like that, those would be the things that I would, not speaking for them, but generally my observation is they would give us comments relative to height and glare, that's what we hear the most of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions before we move to the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, I'll entertain any other questions or comments on this zoning case. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
In the case of Z O N dash two-five dash zero-zero-two-five, I move to approve the rezoning request from R six A residential district and RR Rural Residential District to R six A residential district. The board finds that the request is consistent with the South Central Land Use Plan, which calls for medium-density residential at this location. The board also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest, as it's compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second? Second. We've got a motion to approve the rezoning request from R six A to RR, it's been properly seconded, any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move forward to our final zoning case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Final case for the evening, case Z O N twenty-five oh-oh-two-seven, let's try to get this thing up. This is a little bit different, this is in the northern area of the county, I know we've had a lot of wait for the southern area, but for the most part, this is going to be in the northern area, apparently I'm having some technical problems. So stated before, this is in the northern area of the county, the north-central area of the county, see highlighted by the star, just east of Ramsey Street and towards Tarnet County. The applicant owner is Ernest and Barbara Smith, the request is to go from A one agricultural to R twenty, the intent is for residential development on the property for about a little over five point one acres. You can see that this is Palestine Road, which is where the site is located, trying to get my pointer back over here, there we go. You can see this highlighted in red, but you'll see it on the coloration map here in just a little bit, but it's, it's already going to be R twenty that's out here, that you can see on either side, but you do have a hodgepodge of different zoning districts that are out there currently. Largely single-family area, some manufacturer homes, more of a color of the property, you can see R twenty is currently out here now, you can see, it does have RR, so the difference in RR and R twenty, the lot sizes are still the same, it's a minimum twenty thousand square foot lot size for either one. As I stated before in the previous case, RR does allow some types of non-residential uses, but not a whole lot, really meant for some commercial development in like our rural areas, but for the most part, you have R fifteen, so you have some existing subdivisions that are out here, and you have RR and R twenty, so the request is not, at least in staff's view, out of line with what's already on either side of it. This is the property in question, you can see, existing home on the site. There's water further up the road, there's no sewer, but there's no hydroic or hydroconclusion soils out here, so staff largely believes that the soil's in pretty good shape in order to be able to put well-inseptic out here if it's required, or if they want to extend the water line, they can do that too. There is some topo out here, but not much, I mean, these are four-foot contours, as you start going back into the property, so I mean, largely the front of the property away from the pond that you see in the back is largely flat for the most part, but you know, certainly developable. When staff looked at this, this is the North Central Plan, when we looked at it against that plan, which was just recently adopted, last year, we just wanted to work for it, so they did call for it to be suburban density residential with various goals supporting residential development, so you can see that some of the recommendations out here was to have some, generally a density of no more than one unit per twenty thousand square feet, to preserve the stability and character of the existing residential areas that are out there and so forth and so on, you can see the goals there on the slide, but the associated zoning districts that staff was looking at are R thirty, R thirty A, RR, R twenty, and R twenty A, so staff, of course, given what's around it and what's in the plans, the policies, and the associated districts, felt like it was supportive of the land use plan and your adopted growth goals. This is the subject property. This is the east view, looking along Palestine Road with the site immediately on the left-hand side, you can see the sign there, rezoning notification, this is looking across the street for the south view for Palestine Road, and then this is looking down Palestine's Road with the site immediately on the west, on the left-hand, the right-hand side, sorry. Staff did recommend approval of the request, when we took this to last month's planning board, they supported that eight to zero. I got questions, I'll try to do what I can to answer.
Commissioners, questions on this case before we go to the public hearing or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We will go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there any additional questions or comments on this zoning case? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Fairclough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case Z O N dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-two-seven, I move to approve the rezoning request from A one agricultural district to R twenty residential district. The board finds that the request is consistent with the North Central Area Land Use Plan, which calls for suburban density residential at this location. The board also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest, as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Second. We have a motion to approve the rezoning request from A one to R twenty, it's been properly seconded, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing no questions or comments, I'll entertain your vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Howard, I think you are done.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we'll go ahead and move forward to item five, items of business. Item A was previously done, item B has been pulled, we'll go ahead and move to item C, consideration of homelessness prevention and stabilization voucher program and associated budget ordinance. County Manager Greer.
Yes, Tyvall, Chief of Staff and interim Community Development Director, will present this item. This item was initially presented at the agenda session last week. Turn it over to Ty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as the manager stated, this item was presented at your agenda work session Thursday before last, and so this is the homeless prevention and stabilization voucher program. This program would provide short-term financial assistance to individuals and families experiencing or at risk of homelessness. The program supports housing stability and safe relocation through flexible needs-based vouchers. This program would be administered by the Community Development Department, we would accept referrals through the court and entry process with approved exceptions, payments will be issued directly to vendors. This program would provide five eligible uses, temporary rental assistance, utility assistance, security deposits, and transportation assistance, and that would include in-county and out-of-county. So for in-county, we're talking about things like rides or to employment, medical care, schools, or community resources, and then out-of-county travel for family reunification or permanent housing access, also emergency rapid rehousing. These five eligible uses are in line with services currently provided by the Community Development Department with the use of homeless initiative funds, but they are limited, and so this is, would serve as an expansion to what we're able to do with those homelessness initiative funds. Under the eligible criteria, we would require that the recipient be a resident or be displaced within Cumberland County in Meek Hudd's definition of homelessness, which is a large definition, so it includes being literally homeless, being at imminent risk of homelessness, being homeless under another federal program's definition, or fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, which we deal with all of these situations. And also, I think the most important of these are to demonstrate a plan toward housing stability, and so really honing in and taking part in case management as it relates to not just paying a utility bill or paying for somebody's down payment assistance, and making sure that they have truly what the namesake of the program is, that stability and that prevention as well, and also meet the requirements of being LMI and being equal or less than eighty percent of AMI. And just really quick, it surprised me when I was looking at these numbers a couple of months ago, I remember doing something similar, we were doing these programs back in 2023, and eighty percent AMI was thirty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and now in 2025, it's forty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, and so we're talking about, you know, over six thou, almost seven thousand dollars in inflation of what it is to be low income now, and so that has gone up as well. And so the request that staff is bringing forward is to fund this voucher program with the use of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that funding would come from previously approved funding that was approved for the community development use for permanent supportive and transitional housing, that we are asking the board to redirect for the use of this particular program, and we will also ask that you would approve budget revision B two-six zero-four-five-six to move those dollars over to our, for the use of homeless prevention and for the purpose of tracking those funds appropriately. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vaught. I'll go, before I open it up to Commissioners, just a quick question, in tying back, we know that we've had success with our, with our HOPE program, which is we're partnering with FTCC around, and HOPE is hope, opportunity, and prosperity through education, so it's been, we've had a great track record, we've been briefed on that, you've shown us, and that's continuing. Do we have a connection point back to HOPE that we can refer people, we know people that are in this situation sometimes, it's a good connection point, I know long-term we're looking to do that for our unhoused support center, so just want to, is there a connection point with HOPE as well?
Absolutely, and we have a great relationship, as you said, the county participates in funding that program. We've had some success with even some of our transitional housing participants benefiting from that, we've had people go on to graduate from that program. And so talking about, a couple seconds ago, I mentioned the case management piece, and so not just, you know, paying for a utility bill or that type of thing, but really connecting them to the service, and so, of course, I can't stand here and say that every person would be a good candidate or meet that requirement, but we would, through case management, connect them to those services, and if they're able to, that that's not a barrier, that they can't, that they, that is not, in their way, that they can move on to permanent supportive or to some type of transitional situation.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments for Mr. Vaught?
Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Yes, I just want to commend you and the staff on doing excellent work with this, and definitely it's well needed, as we know that it is a crisis, and you all hear me say that over and over nationally and as far as our community, but the fact that Cumberland County, we are definitely due diligently, our economic development, and with you leading that department as far as interim director, I just wanted to commend you and your team, and also Ms. Heather, our assistant manager here, and Faith, and everyone, and our manager, just the overall team for just stepping forth to bring forth things like this, and I know I was a big fan of this, and just working together with everyone in the Commission, just wanted to commend you all. It's definitely well needed for our community, and it makes a difference.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I applaud you for this program, and because of the way it's situated, this has freed up capacity, and I understand when we're looking at that low income, but there are a lot of people in our community that we need to look at that can't get to that next level of ownership, homeownership, that don't meet that criteria. We've got a lot of teachers, police, sheriff, who work every day but don't make enough, they are, they have to pay their bills every day and can't move to that next level. I would ask that you and this board look at not just that homelessness and that low income, but that next tier of people, those teachers and all of those folk, wherever they work every day, you know, you got tariffs coming in, you got everything coming in, and they need some assistance, and to prevent people who are working from becoming homelessness. If you're working, you're not going to meet this guideline, some of this guideline, and so I would hope that we look at a program to address those needs for those people who are out there every day trying to make it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Yes, I'd like to motion, I'd make a motion at this time.
Let me make sure there aren't any other questions or comments. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion by Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the implementation of the homelessness prevention and stabilization voucher program pilot utilizing two hundred and fifty thousand of previously approved ARP freed-up general fund capacity, and also the associate budget ordinance that we approve that amendment B two-six oh-four-five-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the homeless prevention and stabilization voucher pilot program, it's been properly seconded, any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaught, thank you for bringing this forward. We'll go ahead and move to item E, consideration of requests for qualifications for engineering services for Ann Street Environmental Complex Office Building. County Manager Greer?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, thank you, Commissioner Tyson. I'm moving forward. I was trying to move us down here, Mr. Tyson.
He's been meditating.
Item D, grant of franchise agreement for a deli at the courthouse in DSS second reading. County Manager Greer?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Heather Skeen, Assistant County Manager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And as indicated, Mr. Lee is here in the Commissioner's chambers. This is the required second reading for the franchise agreement for Mr. and Mrs. Lee operating Happy Deli in both the courthouse and at DSS. The first reading occurred on August eleventh, 2025, and if approved, we're asking if approved, we're asking that you approve the franchise agreement and allow the chairman to sign that franchise agreement.
Any questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Do we need a motion, or is it just a second reading?
Second reading, but it is also to approve and to sign the franchise agreement. So we do need a motion to authorize.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the franchise agreement and allow the chairman to franchise agreement for three years and authorize the chairman to sign it.
Still moved. Second.
We've got a motion to approve the franchise agreement that's been properly seconded. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
See, I knew it was going to be unanimous. Thank you for being patient, Mr. Lee. Now we'll go ahead and move to item E. Consideration of requests for qualification RFQ for engineering services for Ann Street Environmental Complex Office Building.
Yes, as we look at improvements for the Ann Street Environmental Complex, we've had a couple of opportunities that we wanted to get approved. RP was RFQ was issued. Amanda Lee, General Manager of Financial Resources, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
We're here to present you with information regarding the Ann Street Environmental Complex as part of our adaptive reuse building. In 2024, an environmental justice study and plan was done for the Ann Street complex, which included the transfer station. That transfer station was approved at the August 11th, 2025 meeting, and as part of this plan, we included the redesign of a building at Ann Street to become a multifunction building for both county staff and the community. And so today's presentation is seeking your approval on architects to provide a design which will service the basis for a future capital improvement project request. We are looking to further define scope and budget, which will be brought through the budgeting process. So I'll just share some highlights. That's that's one concept of what the building would look like, looking at industrial finishes using the concrete surfaces that are there. This is one concept for office space for solid waste in public utilities. This gives you an image of the neighborhood there. So we're asking for approval of the selection of the Smith Gardner team to move forward and to move forward with negotiation of a contract.
Commissioners, questions on this item? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. So the HDR concept, that's not an addition to this. That was that was a supplemental secondary approach.
Yes, we invited two firms to interview. We invited the team of HDR, and we invited the team of Smith Gardner. We felt like both teams were very qualified, and they submit, we asked some questions of them to provide what this concept would look like, and so you got two concepts, and we're recommending that we move forward with the Smith Gardner concept.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes, I make a motion that, first of all, number one, we accept the selection of Smith Gardner Corporation. It's the best qualified firm to provide engineering services that will provide a scope for a future capital improvement project request for the Ann Street Environmental Complex Office Building, and number two, that the grant permission to enter negotiations for detailed scope of work, cost of services, and prepare contract for approval at a future Board of Commuters meeting.
Second. We have a motion to approve Smith Gardner as the qualified firm for engineering services. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions on or comments on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. We'll go ahead and move now to the additional items added. Item F is the approval of formal bid award for opioid settlement for Public Health Department.
G.
But it's item F for us now. County Manager Greer, you recognize?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Robin Coos, Chief Financial Officer, to present this item and answer any questions you have. Also, Heather Skeen will provide feedback and answer any questions you may have also.
And before you we can probably before you go through a briefing, I'm just going to allow Commissioner Adams to ask a question, and maybe we can save some time.
I was just, if you look at this, the reason it's on if you look at GNI, it's on the consent agenda, and I didn't want people getting confused that look like we double paid these people twice. So one is the approval of the formal bid, and the other one's the resolution. If we don't have it on there, some people may get the indication that we paid out these monies twice when it was only one. It's just a process of how we have to do this. That's the only reason I pulled that, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure there was clarity when people look at this consent agenda, because the same people got $800,000, $700,000, all of that. That was the only reason. So I got my clarity. If that's that correct, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any other question on item now F, approval of the formal bid award for opioid settlement for Public Health Department? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Adams?
You can do both, Mr. Chairman. Let me go back up there.
I'm asking for a motion on one, but go ahead.
If you want the one on the approval of the formal bid for the opioid settlement, I would move the finance and purchase of staff. I would recommend the board commissioners award bid number 254-32-PH to the following vendors based on the overall value standard of award: North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, $793,335; ATS of North Carolina LLC, DBA, Carolina Treatment Center, $800,000; Southlight Healthcare, $761,708; Community Health Intervention Specialty Clinic, $800,000; and Mid Carolina Council of Government, $800,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion to approve the formal bid award for opioid settlement. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead. We'll move to item G, formerly known as item I, resolution authorizing the expenditure of opioid settlement funds and the associated budget amendment B260613, and I'll recognize Commissioner Adams for a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moved to approve the resolution authorizing expenditure of opioid settlement funds and associated budget ordinance amendment B260613.
Second.
We have a motion to authorize the resolution of the expenditure for opioid settlement funds and the associated budget amendment. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item H, which was formerly Y, approval on the consent agenda, approval of funding for COC position and associated budget ordinance B260426. County Manager Greer?
Yes, this item was on the agenda for the agenda session. Ty Vaughn, Chief of Staff, interim Community Development Director will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
So this item was brought originally at your June agenda work session by Debbie Brown, the Chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Continuum of Care, and then it was again brought back at your work session last, well, Thursday before last on the 14th, and the board, so that took action to approve those three positions for the COC at that meeting. What I'm bringing back to you this evening is a budget ordinance amendment to fund those positions as well as additional operating costs to fund their needs for that three-year period. So of course, things like computer equipment, phones, office supplies, and the like. So what we're asking for, what you saw in that original budget was $710,000 for the staff costs to cover them for the three-year period, and then I added in an additional $118,000 for the three-year period, which averages out to $39,000 a year. Of course, that's the average in the first year. You have your startup costs, so we're buying things like laptops and things like that. And then, of course, over those next two years, that would trend down. If there is any type of increase, so of course, we can anticipate anything, any decisions by management or the board, but of course, if there's any types of growth or personnel changes within those two years, we would absorb those additional costs within what's in the operating and move that up to personnel as well. And so I'll take any questions that you have about this.
And Mr. Vaughn, before we go to questions, just as a point of information, COC continuum of care and their function?
Yes, so thank you. So the COC is a organization, and I really like a definition that was given by the City of Fayetteville's Economic Community Development Director, Chris Colley. He called it, I think in the city county liaison meeting, the Chamber of Commerce for nonprofits that deal with homelessness. I thought that was a great example. That is a function that is mandated by HUD, an organization mandated by HUD, and they have three main functions. And so those functions include assigning a lead agency, which Cumberland County is a lead agency, administering the HMIS system, which is the Homeless Management Information System, as well as serving as the collaborative applicant. And so what we would do with those three positions that Ms. Brown and ACM Skeen brought forward, they would take on those main functions under the direction of a COC program manager, under the direction of the Community Development Director, and then we would have two additional staff who would deal with pace management as well as those expanded HMIS services to include things like NC Care 360.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Vaughn? Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I had a problem. I mean, we talked about, and I voted no with the agenda setting, but all of a sudden $118,000 shows up, which wasn't in that conversation more than a week ago, and I didn't understand how all of a sudden we were putting on a consent item where we were now going to do $118,500 without having any kind of conversation about that, and it just showed up on this consent agenda. The second issue is we're picking up 16% of the personnel costs, but I had issue with not knowing what those positions paid, where they were housed, and I think they're going to be housed inside your office, I mean, or whatever. Those kind of things just weren't brought forth, and those were my concerns, and that was one of the reasons I voted no. But you just can't put $118,500 and stick it in on the consent agenda. As we had a long discussion about it, and knowing that I had already voted no on that part, to stick that in there, I just felt that to be concerning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes, I make a motion that we make approval of the budget ordinance amendment B260462 for the following three positions as were stated for Mr. Ty Vaughn at this particular time.
Is there a second?
For social worker one, I'm sorry. Do I need to mention what those positions are? You want me to state them again?
Just approval of the budget ordinance amendment.
All right, I was going to state what those were again.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion to approve budget ordinance amendment B620462. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
I would yes, just like to make a comment. I want to again thank Ty and his staff, and just want to remind the board that as we know the importance of individuals doing certain work, and just as he's already stated, the work that they do at COC, Continuum of Care, and again, I can't iterate enough, as we were, you know, talking about the whole goal of helping those help a hand up for individuals that are going through challenges with everything from traditional, you know, housing. It's important for us to be mindful of programs like this are very important, and that of the individuals that have these positions. I just want us to, you know, be mindful. We can't be mindful enough that there's a lot that needs to be done. So again, thank you and your team, and also the individuals that will be able to come aboard to put some things and initiative in place. That's all my comment is at this time.
Any other comments or questions on the motion on the table, or excuse me, motion before you? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman Deveyer, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Fairclough. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll go ahead and move forward to item I, which was formerly AB, Revision of Rule 20 and 25 of the Board Rules and Procedures. I'll call on County Manager Greer or Attorney Moorefield.
Yes, I'll turn this over to Attorney Moorefield to discuss any answering questions you may have.
Board members, this matter was presented to the agenda session back in June after having been considered by the June Policy Committee, and there was a great deal of discussion at the agenda session, and finally, it was directed that we just go back to the Policy Committee for further consideration, and that just took place the 12th of August, come June last week. But in any event, the language, and this is a rather lengthy memo, that I did that, just passed on the information that had been before you before, and added a couple more statutes, full statute of form and a full statute of voting to explain some of the ways that courts look at interpreting statutes like this. But in any event, if you look at the in your attachments, the actual proposed revisions, Rule 20, what you see in red is what you have seen before at the all of you have seen at the agenda session. And I'll point out that in the first paragraph of that, where you've got the red font and the black font, and the last sentence, which is stricken, is from your existing rule 20, which says, "A member who fails to vote not having been excused shall be recorded as voting in the affirmative." Not sure what the intent of that was when it was put in. It's been in there for a long time, but these rules came from a publication that the school government put out around 2000, and that sentence was not in those rules. So there was some different meaning, reason that they were included by this board. But in any event, I bring that to your attention because it's also, let me explain these other changes. The stuff that's in red font, the first section of red font, are three statutes that are relatively new. They were just not in existence when these rules were adopted. And they clearly address particularly the statute 14234, which is it's not a matter of excusing. You're prohibited from voting under some of those circumstances, and it's just a shorthand reference to those. All those are spelled out in more detail in the Code of Ethics that you also have adopted as in place. The language in the rest of that paragraph has been added again as a clarification of what this rule meant, because even though you have this language there, existing language that says, "A member who fails to vote not having been excused shall be recorded as voting in the affirmative," that has not been the practice and the way that that was done in terms of the minutes that were taken, apparently ever, at least not in the last 20 years. But in any event, the second section is was something that was just added, and that is was is, I think, a good way to address the concern of a member who experiences an emergency or health circumstances which prevents his or her attendance at a meeting or participation by teleconference. That's a separate rule that we'll look at after this. And I think that language, you can't have a rule that covers every type of situation that you might imagine, but I think that conference will cover everyone satisfactorily in terms of having an emergency situation, like on the day of a meeting, that you couldn't make any other arrangements. The language in blue font is the language that the Policy Committee just The language in blue font is the language that the Policy Committee, just on August the 12th, recommended and is recommended to the board. And that makes it clear that if you just, a member who does not attend a meeting without having been granted an excused absence shall be listed in the minutes as an unexcused absence and recorded as voting in the affirmative to all motions made in the meeting. So that goes well beyond anything about someone being in a meeting and asking to be excused and not being excused, or just not voting, it's for someone who just doesn't show up at all. That was, and that was the thing that got the most discussion at the Agenda Session. Rule 25, I don't believe, the Policy Committee did not recommend any further changes of that, and I don't, and there was not really very much concern expressed about that at the Agenda Session. All that I've done there, and all I'm recommending, is clarifying the requirement that you still must have a form of members present in a room to allow to have a meeting. The old rule said that if you were participating by teleconference, you could account for a form. That was prior to the Anson County case that came out a couple of years ago, about a long time. And we've always followed that stat, the case law anyway, but this puts it in the rule. And I also have expanded the definition of what teleconference is, because it's not like it was the old days when everything was just done by a phone call, that's it. Now, we have all the other technology available to do that, and I'm just lumping all of that as teleconference and describe it that way. And we also make it clear that if you get a granted excuse absence by a chair, and the process of participating by teleconference is, it remains the same. Participating by teleconference is not an excuse you not to come to the meeting or not to vote, it is permitting you to participate and vote by teleconference. And if you, once you do that, we clarified in the rules that if you were, if you make those arrangements and then you fail to work out, the clerk gets set up, or if you fail to participate because you do that, or you fail to connect to the meeting through the teleconference, and you lose connection through the teleconference, you'll be recorded as voting in the affirmative to all motions for the duration of the meeting. And that's because the intent of allowing you to participate that way was that you would participate. And we've had, occasionally do have instances where connections are lost and stuff like that, but you have to make sure that you're careful about trying to maintain that and try to get back on. But I don't think there was any real concern about those changes to this Rule 25. The main point of contention was about how to count, or we have to count the vote of a member who just did not attend a meeting. So that's, what you got for you now, and I'll answer any questions if you can.
Commissioners, questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm just opposed to the blue item that was added, any member who does not attend a meeting, you're voting in the affirmative, because that's not, I think, when we run for office, that's what we do. And it doesn't make sense when you take out and above, the two paragraphs above, a member who fails, who's there, who fails to vote not having excused, shall be recorded as voting in the affirmative, that's taken out. So if I sit here and don't vote, I'm not as recorded as being in the affirmative, that doesn't make sense if you've got this next one, which says if I don't show up, it's all in the affirmative. I sit on a whole lot of boards, I sit on the Board of the School of Government, I don't have, I don't remember anywhere that I've been, that if you don't attend a meeting, that you are deemed to have voted in affirmative to all motions made in the meeting. And I would be adverse to that and vote against that. I don't know, I'm sitting with the State Association County Commissioners, I tried to ask them this weekend, I don't think any of them have that listed as one of theirs. Some of the other boards I sat on, I called, that's not where you don't, for whatever reason, if you don't show up, that you end up voting in the affirmative. So I would be opposed to that, and I don't think that that's what the citizens of this community wanted. You know, according to who sits as, where you are and who makes the motion, if all your motions can be in the affirmative, you can make the motion and tailor the motion to manipulate whatever voting that you have. I didn't say you would do that, Mr. Chairman. But you know, there's other people that's going to come on in the future. And I think that that's just asking for all kinds of issues. And I've been here, most times, most people attend a meeting unless they have some kind of health or emergency issue, or can't get back from a doctor's appointment out of town. And you can't get, sometimes you can't get cellphone, if you're up in the mountains, you may not be able to get that cellphone connection or whatever. So I would ask that this not be included in this policy.
Commissioner Adams, let me explain, I took that language out that you mentioned, the stricken last sentence, because I've used the language that comes straight from the statute. So you're still, if you were in a meeting and you are not excused, if you leave the meeting or fail to vote, when you're physically present there, then you would, you'll be counted in the minutes as an affirmative vote. So that, it was just to clarify that the way that was done, it reads before, it's not clear that that's not what it was intended just to address. I think that's how the board has always interpreted it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions or comments, Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to make sure that I don't get confused and clarified. So in this blue, that stating any member who does not attend a meeting without having granted an excused absence shall be listed in the minutes as an unexcused absent, recorded as voting in affirmative to all motions made in the meeting. So that is the state, I'm not stating if you're here. So if you're not here, speaking of the School of Government, I'm just interested, does anyone know here, Mr. Commissar Adams or anyone, what is their status on that, the U N C government, since we do go by a lot of their governing trainings in regards to, again, for our listening audience, if someone is not at a meeting, what is their status, I guess, quote, on that? Is it just considered not voted at all instead of an affirmative? I do have a concern about that. If you're not, if you are not at a meeting, because as we know, we do have to be, you know, we are partisan, we're not nonpartisan in regards to, for the commissioners. So that, I guess, is my question of clarification. If somebody is not here, what is their status on that as far as, I guess, guidelines from the higher level, they do trainings, do they just have that not be a vote, or do they have that as affirmative? Does anybody know what their guidelines is on that?
Yes, ma'am. The School of Government's position on this issue is that it is simply not addressed in the statutes, and they don't say don't do it or do it, they're just saying it's not addressed. And they make the same points that I've made in this memo by pointing out the language, for instance, for counties, if someone doesn't attend a meeting, there's a statute, it's not a good statute, it's not very effective, but it actually says, "The board may compel the attendance of an absent member by ordering the sheriff to take the member into custody." That's, that's, that comes from a long, that's what, but.
How would you do that? That's Texas.
But the way courts interpret statutes, they'll say, well, this is the remedy that the legislature gave you, if they want to give you another remedy, that, yeah, but that's just my experience with doing court of appeals work. But the, and then, and here's the other strange thing, the other statute that I've added in there, 168, that's coming from the chapter on municipal, town government, and they, they have the language, I put it in bold print, "A failure to vote by a member who is physically present in the council chamber or who is withdrawn without being excused by majority of both the remaining members and shall be recorded as an affirmative vote." So cities don't have a choice about that, that's a state law that requires it to be done that way. I have used that language in our revisions to Rule 20 to address that situation, and most folks do that, with the argument that it's taking the language from something that's on, although it's strictly not allowed by the statute. And the School of Government, it is in the proposed drafts that they have of proposed rules you might want to consider, and that's the basis for it, because they are using something that the court has sanctioned. I mean, the legislature put in place, not specifically for counties, but for towns. And I actually, before I did this last, when I got the most current version there is for the School of Government, of the little book they have on Board's Rules of Procedure, I'd be glad to send that to any of you. You can find what I've been looking for, and I would be very happy to look at it.
Vice Chairman Jones, anything else?
No, that's all for me, I guess. So the decision is if we want it to be affirmative or just counted as a no vote at all, I guess our board has to make that decision.
And just as a point, and just as a point, that's an unexcused absence. So if they're granted excused absence, then it's not, so, just to be clear on that. Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as I know, and you can clarify this for me, does the General Assembly hold themselves to the standard of this blue language here? I don't believe they do, does it?
Is that a question for the Chair?
Yeah.
So you, as a General Member, General Assembly Member, you can request an excused absence and be not present for that vote?
Okay, if you're not present with, without, if you don't have an excused absence, how is the vote counted, or is it counted?
It's not counted, it's counted as an unexcused absence.
Okay, but it's not, it's not a vote.
It reflects that you're not in your seat and not doing the job that you were elected to do.
Okay, I'm against the blue language, I think it's unnecessary, and I don't really want to see the county commissioners having the first order of business to excuse absences for people. I just, I just don't see a purpose in that. I think it's unnecessary. And when I first became chairman, I basically memorized robust rules of order, and I know that it has that language that you talked about earlier, about if a person leaves a meeting unexcused, then it is affirmative vote. And I can see how it would be necessary, I don't think items in blue are necessary, that's my opinion.
Commissioner Adams, did you have something else?
You know, I don't have a problem with it being designated in the clerks or in the minutes that it was unexcused, I just don't think it should be an affirmative vote after that. I think then people can come back, they can look, see if you're not doing your job, people don't vote you back in. If you don't show up for work, you get fired. I mean, and I think that's the remedy for us, is if you don't show up and take a vote, you get fired, they just don't reelect you.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess that's my concern too, if it's going to be unexcused, most definitely, I'm going to be honest, I'd be in favor of it not being counted. Again, I don't want to, you know, we just have to be realistic here, we are partisan, I understand the language for city, they're nonpartisan, but if something's going to be excused or unexcused, especially if it's going to be unexcused, you certainly, I don't feel a vote for affirmative. If you're going to be considered unexcused, that means your vote should just not be counted period at all, it shouldn't go in favor of saying, yes, you're in favor of something and you weren't there. I mean, to me, that doesn't go together. It's automatically unexcused, but however, we're going to make it affirmative, so it's like, your vote is going to go towards something that you weren't even there for. So we're going to say you're not here, so that means that your vote also should be not to be decided either way. That's just my personal opinion about that. I mean, unexcused is unexcused, that means there shouldn't be one way or another a favor of your vote being said that you had, you know, no say in.
Anything else, Vice Chairman Jones?
That's it.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but each of us that are sitting up here, and Commissioner Council, who isn't present, we're all duly elected and voted by residents of this county to make decisions on their behalf. And as such, we all have a responsibility and a duty to vote on the matters that are before us. Certainly understand that there's times and circumstances that would warrant a member not to be here at their post during a meeting. And I think we've allowed for a pathway for that in this policy. However, Mr. Chairman, what concerns me is, as we go throughout our time here on this board, we're going to be called upon to make hard decisions and to cast a vote for this community on things that some of us may not like, some of us may not want to be able to vote on, but nonetheless, that's our job. And currently, the mechanism that this board has as a remedy for someone who just doesn't want to show up and take the hard vote is to call the sheriff's office and have them dragged down here. To me, if, and I'm not saying any member at this board would do that, but to me, what this policy does is it holds the people on this commission accountable to the people that elected them by knowing that if they don't want to take a decision on a hard vote, that their vote's still going to count, regardless of whether they show up or not. And so that's my feelings on the matter, we're all elected, we're all adults, we've all been asked to make these hard decisions, and the community deserves to know where we stand on each and every one of these issues, Mr. Chairman. And I yield back my time, thank you for recognizing me.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I guess, Mr. Tyson, what I would say to the board, is that it could just as easy be that any excuse is a no vote and not a yes vote. I mean, I don't understand why we make it a yes vote, make it a no vote. I mean, if you're going to do that, if that's the case, you just make it a no vote. I don't know why we go to an affirmative yes vote. And so I thank you for giving me that time, but I just think that, I do agree that there are hard votes that you make, we all here, I think everybody's been here this whole year, I think you were in the mountains and called in, Hawaii and called in. And I don't think any of us try to shirk those duties to be able to do that, and I just don't think that it's necessary. And it's really not in the best interest that it just turns into a yes vote just because you don't show. I think the people, they don't see you here, they won't vote you back in.
Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess that's my concern too, because I honestly, in my opinion, just don't count it either way, because that is the dilemma, and I agree with both Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Tyson, but the situation would be with that because of the fact, it puts us in a dilemma, because it is all, as you both have stated, we're here to represent all people, so then you run into the issue problem, well, why did you all say it's going to be a yes vote instead of a no? So with that being said, maybe it should just not, you know, not be counted at all, because that is true. The same way it could be yes, it could also be no, because you're not here. So with that being said, because we are all elected, and the person, whoever's out for sickness or whatever, they have a duty, responsibility, maybe because they're not here and we don't know if they want yes or no, it might be in the best interest for the community not to count their vote. And again, I do agree, when voting time comes up and people see that you're not in these seats to vote for them, you know, they have the opportunity to elect somebody else.
Commissioners, go ahead, and we'll go to round two, Commissioner Faircloth. And I appreciate the spirited dialogue here, this is good, I would have hoped we've done it in the Agenda Session. Well, this is good.
But I think we did, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
We did, we did have some discussion about it. Just listen to Commissioner Jones there for a minute, it just occurred to me that you can have a motion pass because a person that's not here didn't vote for it, but got counted as if they did. And what she was saying, that's something that may not be in the community's best interest. And so, that just occurred to me, that's even more fuel to the fire, we just need to scratch the blue writing, in my opinion.
So Board of, the issue really looks like it's around the additional item that was used, that the attorney crafted based on his recommendation on how we have a remedy for someone not appearing for their duty to vote. So you have a duty to vote, this blue language, if you have an unexcused abs, this, this blue language provided the remedy for just not showing up and not, not being here to exercise your duty to vote, which you were elected to do. So that, this is the issue that, everything else, I don't hear any other issues on any of the other changes that we need to put in place, that we've been requested to put in place. All right, I'm going to go ahead and go to Commissioner Tyson, and then I'll go back to you, Commissioner Faircloth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In listening to the other board members' comments, I would certainly be amenable to Commissioner Adams' suggestion that it be changed from an affirmative vote to a negative vote, and would certainly entertain that as a, as an amendment to this document. I yield back my time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, that was not a motion, I'm not entertaining motions right now, but I appreciate the dialogue. Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
And I would actually agree with Commissioner Tyson on that, if somebody's not there, it makes more not there, i- it makes more sense to make it a no vote or just leave it alone. But I would, I would, I would support it being a no vote, because it, it essentially is a no vote. It's a, I walked, I walked vote, basically.
Commissioner Faircloth, anything else?
That's all.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I guess I should have brought that up. But, um, but no, I think that puts the board in the quandary. If you get to, uh, just like we did the ordinance, um, if it's a no vote, then the ordinance doesn't pass. That, I don't think that's fair to whoever put up the ordinance that comes in. If you didn't want to come because of that ordinance, you shouldn't be able to stop it by not coming, if you understand what I'm saying.
Same thing.
Uh, so I think that the best thing is that you just have an unexcused absence, and the board that's, that the quorum that's there, uh, carries out the business of the board.
Mr. Attorney, let me, just, uh, uh, just a point of clarification. So, right now, our remedy for someone to ensure that they confirm what their duty to vote, which they're properly elected to do, is what? We call the sheriff?
You may compel the attendance of an absent member by ordering the sheriff to take the member into custody.
And that's done by who?
The board.
The board, with what kind of vote?
It, it ju- it doesn't say. It's in the statute on quorum, but if you didn't have a quorum, you can't take action. So, the way courts will-
So, I'm gonna assume, I'm, I'm gonna make that assumption as the chair of the board, that it could be a simple majority. So, as a simple majority, as we move forward, if we remove this portion, if we have people not here, we will take a simple majority vote. So, we, we still will take votes on absences, on whether we want, and I'm just saying, this is what we could do, 'cause that's our current, and we could compel the sheriff or his deputies to go get them and bring them here. That's our current, that's our current, that's our current remedy.
It, it would make, might make for a very long meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that was my, that was my thing.
Oh, oh, oh.
You could recess the meeting for-
Hold on. Vice Sherwin Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I want to know, um, currently, what does happen? I'm gonna be honest, like, I've been out because of, you know, it's no secret deaths. I had two deaths in the families. So, excuse, so, what, those are considered excused. So, then, as far as my vote, 'cause I just want to know, and I try to definitely represent the community as best as I can. So, those are excused because of deaths, but however, on the record, then it just states what? That I didn't vote? On the times when I've, most of the time, I will call in, but on the times when it's excused, what takes place in that place? It just shows that you, because it's excused, you just don't have a record of which, that, that you didn't vote? Is that what happens?
So, what I do currently in the minutes-
Yes, what do you do currently?
-I note that if a commissioner's not here, like tonight, it'll say that Commissioner Council was absent, and I only count the quorum as the six. So, when I know to vote, it is six to zero. Or if, like Commissioner Adams voted in opposition, it's five to one, and I put that he voted in opposition.
Okay. And thank you for clarifying that, because, I mean, I do appreciate that we can call in and do all that, of which I try to do the best I can with that, unless it is an emergency excuse for a death or something like that. So, I'm glad that you informed us and our listeners of that, that it's excused. However, it'll just state who's here. That's what we have in place current.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that our, our community appreciates that as well. Thank you.
So, Mr. Attorney, just to clarify, um, moving forward with your recommendations, the only way you would ha- the, the way you would have a, a affirmative vote on a motion is if you have an unexcused absence.
Correct.
So, if, if the board has an excused absence, which if somebody has an issue, they have a death in the family, whatever, at the beginning of the meeting, I, the chair can clearly state, "Without objection, this person's excused." We don't have to take a vote, we can just say, "Without objection," and move forward.
It would still, it would still need a board action.
I understand. I, but, listen to what I'm saying. I would take the mo- I would say, "Without objection." So, if there's an objection on that, then we would go to a roll call vote. Without objection allows me to move, facilitate the meeting, without having to have, uh, a, 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 a roll call vote, per se. So, again, to be clear, if someone is absent, they're in the mountains, they're on vacation, they are sick, they are, uh, at a funeral, they're, and they have it, and they, they let us know, we have, they're in excused absence. Their vote is the same way, we are counting it tonight.
Okay.
The issue is if you have an unexcused absence. So, if you choose not to come, you choose not to do your duty, you choose not to take a hard vote, which we are called to do. And, and Commissioner Faircloth, I will tell you that I took over a hundred and some, I probably took over 2,000 votes in the four years I was in the General Assembly. A lot of those I did not want to take, because a lot of them were against my party. Um, and so, I took those votes. I didn't walk. So, it's important that we, my, my point of this is that you have an unexcused absence, that's when your vote is in the affirmative. Or if you want to make it in, in the negative, you can make it in the negative. But you have a, you have something that is documented on record. If you have an excused absence, which will be 99.9% of the time, it won't count. Your vote doesn't count. That, that's what we're trying to say. I'll, I'll open the floor back up, and then we're gonna move to a motion. Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I just understand, and I'll keep it brief, 'cause I know this is, uh, we've brought it up a few times. We, I know from our ethics training, we have to take a vote. We have a duty to vote. Um, I don't imagine a board scenario where if someone is absent, the board's gonna, um, not take into every consideration why the individual wasn't. And if it was to get out of the vote, well, I don't think that qualifies as excused absence. So, I, I'm not sure, regardless if it's an affirmative or the negative, I believe this board's willing to work in the best interest of this community. And at the end of the day, if there's an absence from a board member, I would only feel that all of us would understand, be understanding, and move forward and conduct the business appropriately. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Vice Sherwin Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess I'm coming up with a friendly amendment suggestion, because those that will be here, in the event if someone is not here, could we have it be that your vote would go towards what the majority is? I mean, are you all open to that? In other words, for those that are here, if the majority votes yes, the person that's not here, their vote would go for yes. If the majority votes no, your vote would go towards the no. So, your vote would be counted in that of the favor of the majority. Is anybody open to that consideration?
Vice Sherwin Jones, the only thing I would say is if, if one person's absent and we're 3-3, then there's not a majority. So, we wouldn't, that would be the only bad situation, which, it's a great, great thought, but a great point. But there would be times that we wouldn't have a majority, because we could be split 3-3, like we have been previously on a zoning case. Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Last thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, um, so I would, as to the argument that, I always tell people, don't look at the people that's sitting in the chair now. We're making rules for people who are gonna be sitting here well after us. We tend to be very congenial with each other, but you can get a board that could be just as antagonistic as, and try to make somebody look just as bad as they can. So, I always tell folk, don't look at the person that's sitting in that chair right now, just look at the chair, 'cause the chairs change. And so, uh, you know, yeah, everybody here may say, "I understand so-and-so not here, we can do that." Another board, 'cause I've been, when we were at the association, there are some very contentious boards around North Carolina that fight all the time. I'm glad I'm not on that board, never have been. And I thank you all for that not having that. But there are some boards that they can't get anything halfway done because of how they are. So, it's for the future, because you're right in this for not us, but whoever sits in this chair. So, thank you.
So, I, I just want to make a, a point, uh, on, on that. I think a lot of the changes that have been made have been to standardize and create some structure and procedure that have gone through policy over the last eight or nine months. Uh, standardizing things like board and commissions and the process by which we do that. So, um, so it is looking at the seats and not at the individuals. It's creating structure and creating procedures and processes. Uh, the review of these rules is just that. We have some antiquated things that the, the attorney brought to us, that there's now case law for that we need to address. And quite frankly, this board has come into a couple situations where we didn't know what to do with a vote. I believe in clarity. I believe in right and wrong, in black and white, in understanding, uh, where it is, uh, and what we need to do to follow the rules that we understand. I think what I would like to do at this point, uh, is we continue to have discussion around the items in blue. I think it's imperative, 'cause there's some case law that drives the rest of it, that we, um, look to a, adopt everything that's been marked in red, uh, and take the blue item, and we move it back to an agenda session, our next agenda session, so we can continue this dialogue, and maybe have some dialogue outside this, uh, because I believe there's still a point. I believe, uh, there's are some people on this board, uh, that would like to see this in place. I believe there's some people that would not like to see it in place, and maybe some further discussion with our attorney offline. But in the sense of, uh, it, we've gone on for about 20 minutes around this item, we've had dialogue at the agenda session. Uh, I think that's what I would look to do. We accomplish, uh, standardizing some of the rules and the changes that the attorney needs, and we allow this blue item to come back, Mr. Manager, to our next agenda session, uh, so that we can continue this dialogue, for as long as we want to continue this dialogue, and maybe review it outside this board. Uh, if that pleases his body, I would entertain a motion from Commissioner Tyson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I make a motion that we approve the revisions presented of Rules 20 and 25 of the board's rules of procedure, and direct the county attorney to update the board's written rules and procedures outlined in his memo dated 8/20/2025 to this board, and that we exclude the paragraph in blue of Rule 20 to come back at the next regularly scheduled agenda meeting of this board.
Check of the motion. Motion has been properly made and seconded on the adjustment to our rules with the one item coming back at our next agenda session. Are there any questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
I believe that completes our, that completes our items of business, and we'll move to Item 6, nominations. We don't have any nominations at this time. Appointments, uh, there are no, there are no appointments for this meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, and I will convene the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting, and we'll move to the next item of business, Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board Consent Item, Agenda. Uh, I'll ask if there's any changes to the consent agenda.
None. Uh, this item was approved as Item 3O on the consent agenda.
I would move to approve, Mr. Chairman, uh, under the Norcrest-
Yep.
Uh, the, uh, consent agenda for the Norcrest, which would be A and B.
Check of the motion. We have a motion to approve the Norcrest Water and Sewer Governing Consent Agenda, Item A and B. It's been properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
I'll go ahead and adjourn the Norcrest Water Sewer District Governing Board meeting, and I'll reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, and County Manager Greer, we don't, don't have a closed session, sir.
No closed session, Chairman.
All right. Uh, hearing no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We got a motion on the floor, properly seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We're adjourned.